We're pleased to call it to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And thank you for not throwing anything or booing during the State of the City this year.
Good job.
Good audience. Even Paul behaved himself, and that's saying something.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Let's see, by way of roll call, we have all of us here today. As was mentioned earlier, we have Mr. Isaac playing the role of City Manager this evening. And our opening ceremony this evening is by Councilmember Karen Lang.
Would everyone just stand and be the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have some scouts that are with us today, and did someone from the staff talk to you about what you get to do? Because here's what you get to do if they haven't. We always invite each troop to send one boy member, their senior patrol leader, or whoever the highest ranking boy is here, up to the microphone and tell us your name and tell us your troop number and what badge you guys are working on tonight.
I am Joshua Thomas. I have troop numbers six, four, six. I'm here for the communications mayor badge. And my brother's here for communications and citizenship in the community.
Right, welcome. Good to have you at this, gentlemen. Thank you. Let's see, did I see another scout group? I didn't, but we do have, we do have a member from Representative Jim Matheson's congressional office with us this evening, and I just drew a blank in these hot lies. Please remind me.
Pam.
Pam, that's right.
Remember the cooking spray.
Okay.
Just remember the cooking spray. Good evening. My name's Pam Giuliano, and I am Congressman Matheson's staffer that covers the West Valley City issues, the West Valley City area. The congressman's office is located down in West Jordan, 90th, 9067 South, 1300 West. So he'd welcome all of you to come down and visit. But one of my assignments this evening, Mayor, is to introduce myself to you, the council, the community. In your address, you were talking about the co-creator and cooperative agency and cooperative community commitments. One or two of the top priorities that we have is to get to know the community on a more individualized level. So I'll be meeting with all of your council members and taking a look at what some of the issues are in their specific areas, if it's broke down geographically. Look forward to hearing feedback from all of you, and the congressman is pleased and honored to be representing West Valley City. So I welcome any feedback and any comments that you might have for me to take back to the congressman, but thank you for allowing me a few minutes.
Thank you, Pam. Good to have you, and thank you for representing Congressman Matheson so well. She's already been out here to meet with our staff to talk about legislative priorities and issues of concern, and I'm sure it won't be the last time we see her.
No.
So welcome to West Valley City.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Let's see, number four was special recognitions, number five approval of our minutes. Council, we have the minutes of January 15th and 22nd for your consideration this evening.
Move for approval of the minutes of January 15th and January 22nd?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes passed unanimously. We do have a special presentation tonight regarding the National Night Out Award. Mr. Isaac?
Thank you. Is that going, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm not sure if that's gonna be...
If I remember from our study meeting, Councilman Craig Thomas has that award, and will present that to us on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Mayor. I saw Craig over there, and thank you, Craig.
As all of you are hopefully aware, once again, West Valley City has received recognition from the National Association of Town Watch. This year, we ranked 13th among communities with sizes between 10,000 and 299,000. To give you an idea of who we're competing against, not necessarily that we're competing, but who we're being compared with, there's several communities in Minnesota that are, St. Paul to be one of them, who is in our category, and they last year had close to 34,000 participants with 300 events in their community. So West Valley City is very fortunate. This is the ninth consecutive year that we've been recognized. Our neighborhoods do an amazing job. We had 34 community events throughout the city in the month of August, roughly 8,000 participants in those communities. We also had four safety fairs and many, many meetings in the month of August. I think I'm still a little bit tired, actually. So once again, the National Association of Town Watch has recognized West Valley City, and I would like to present this award to you.
And of course, I accept this on behalf of the council and the entire city, and the fun part is then it'll be displayed upstairs where the staff that's really behind this worked so hard every year on it, and we appreciate their efforts. As you heard in the remarks earlier, a lot of the goals is here and focuses neighborhoods. And we have a terrific neighborhood group working with a lot of great volunteers, and we're looking to really build on that because we have a wonderful start as this award indicates.
And I think the neighborhood staff that is here deserves a round of applause for earning that award for the ninth straight time.
Could you all stand up, please? Be freehanding. Anyone else want to make a comment on that board? Okay, we were at many of those events. We'll be there again this year, so appreciate the good work. We come to item seven tonight, which is our comment period. We've had one representative of the public sign up to speak in our comment period this evening, Mr. George H. Zinn, a friend of mine from 371 Logan Avenue in Salt Lake. And welcome to our chambers, Mr. Zinn, and you have up to five minutes.
Well, you know, I don't know, I'm not a citizen of West Valley City. I don't know if I should be surfing your time, but as far as, since I'm already here, I guess I'm allowed to just...
Buy something at the mall on your way out, at least at Tax Stars.
Sure. Yeah, that's right. I would like to, I think they kind of stole my, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit on this previous thing as far as the neighborhoods, and I, you know, I would like, not being from West Valley City, of course, I don't know exactly how things are operating here, but I, you know, I'd like to emphasize as far as beautification. I think that cities are a microcosm consisting of the people and of the homes that are there. And, you know, I would like to see that there might be some kind of a program established, and I don't know what you do already as far as neighborhoods, cleanups, things like that, where you get the neighborhoods involved, particularly during this snow season. You know, that I do a lot of walking and a lot of public transportation and so on, and I'm often disturbed that there's not snow removal on a lot of these sidewalks, which can become dangerous, and I don't know, you know, what we can do to get these people out here as far as giving them some kind of incentive to get a lot of these things done and giving them pride in their neighborhood. And I think, you know, it starts from governments, what I concern, you know, but it government is from the bottom up, you know, and it's how the people make the city beautiful and make, and so, you know, I would like to see some kind of program where you have a beautification event, some kind of incentivized program that will get these people out and, you know, get neighborhood captains, maybe whatever. We do it in our neighborhood, we have neighborhood drives and so on, or we, everybody is responsible for their own jurisdictions, and, you know, in that way you get pride and you get, but that's my comment, so, you know. Yeah.
Well, thank you, good sir, and you're always welcome in West Valley City.
Okay, thank you.
Council, excuse me, Mr. City Manager, any comments you have this evening?
No, sir.
Councilmembers, any comments you have? Okay, we come to item eight on the agenda, which is a public hearing, and this is regarding Resolution 13-12. Mr. Isaac, could you please introduce this matter?
Thank you, sir. West Valley City would like to partner with the Community Development Corporation of Utah to remodel older homes in the city, 50 years and older, single-family homes, to basically help us prevent deterioration and protect the property values there. CDCU already purchases HUD homes and repairs them and then sells them to low and moderate income families. Under this program, the city would essentially partner with them and use C2BG funds, unallocated funds, to work in conjunction with CDCU and purchase homes as part of our home facelift program in the city. The funds that are proposed to be used and to be shared with CDCU is $150,000, and again, these are unallocated funds that we have with our, with the, under the Community Development Block Grant Program. It requires a public hearing because obviously after the council makes their determination, we have to submit this proposal to HUD for their approval.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will now open the public hearing regarding Resolution 13-12. Is there anyone who's come to speak on this matter? Anyone? Okay, then I now close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discretion.
Mayor, I would move approval of Resolution 13-12.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion to that item?
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at this list, and is, are we only talking about the $150,000? Are we talking about this entire development block grants that we have listed?
We're only talking about the $150,000 that's going to be allocated. You're essentially voting on an amendment to include the home facelift program in that grant. Or the useful funds.
So this is just amending that budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good question. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a comment. I'd like to, you know, I appreciate the staff putting this program together. We've been waiting some time since this was hatched in the great mind of Councilman Rushton and brought to us three years ago in our strategic plan meeting, and it's an exciting thing, and I think it will help a lot, and I hope that this is only the beginning that we're able to march through and help our residents revitalize many of our West Valley City neighborhoods. So I'm enthusiastic about this start.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
Just have one other question. Have, I believe we've determined what neighborhoods we're going to work on first. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I asked that question actually this afternoon, and I believe it's a neighborhood that is just directly, isn't it just directly east of us? Yeah, I'm not sure the name of the actual neighborhood.
West Valley?
Well, it's just directly east of us.
And south.
And south.
This will allow them to come in and get some loans, some low-interest loans from the city and work with different builder supplies to help...
I essentially see the Community Development Corporation, basically, they're already buying homes through, with these low-income homes, and what they do is they buy them, and then they need a lot of money to basically, if you will, give them a facelift or upgrade all of their things. So what they would do is they'd come in and say, hey, we would like to use C2BG funds now, the funds that we're going to allocate, to help us with that facelift, and they turn around and sell it to, again, low and moderate income people. Thank you.
You know, as we talked earlier about our city goals, this fits with letter T, right, for transitioning neighborhoods and helping our older housing stock, so I think this home facelift program fits right in line with what we've been talking about and continue to talk about as a city. Let's call the vote then, because we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving Resolution 13-12? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. We have a second public hearing this evening. Mr. Isaac, if you could please introduce the one related to Resolution 13-13.
Thank you. This resolution declares a portion of 6200 South and 6425 West to be surplus. The city, before they can do away with property, they have to, we have to first declare through council, declare it a surplus property. UDOT, we'd like to make essentially a land swap with UDOT. This particular land swap consists of about five different parcels and about 3.1 acres. It's going to be used as a right-of-way agreement with UDOT for the construction and help facilitate the construction of the Mountain View Corridor, so...
Right, thank you. I now open the public hearing regarding Resolution 13-13 to receive public input regarding declaring this property a surplus up there by the Mountain View Corridor. Is there anyone who's come to speak on this issue tonight? Anyone? Okay, then I close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure?
I would move for approval of Resolution 13-13.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That one passes. We have a few resolutions this evening not requiring a public hearing. Mr. Isaac, if you could introduce the first one, please, 13-14.
This particular resolution then just follows through on the last public hearing and amends the agreement between the transfer of the property to, for the Mountain View Corridor between us and UDOT. It essentially facilitates the transfer the right of way.
Okay, thank you. Council, what's your pleasure here?
Move for approval of Resolution 13-14.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, that too is unanimous. 13-15, Mr. Isaac.
Again, this again follows through with this particular public hearing and resolution. This particular resolution then transfers, property transfers between UDOT and the West Valley City on that Mountain View Corridor, and this action actually authorizes the city to execute that right-of-way agreement. It explains the maintenance requirements that are going to take place into the future and also the quitclaim deeds associated with the property.
Okay, thank you. Council, anyone would like to make a motion on this one?
I would move for approval, Resolution 13-15.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion? For the sake of you scouts, we meet each Tuesday at 4:30 in the room next door for what we call a study meeting, kind of a work meeting, where we always review the items that'll be on the next week's agenda and have different presentations, and so everything we're discussing today, if we seem to move kind of fast, it's because we've already had at least one week to discuss and think about these issues. But you're probably not too sad if we move fast anyway. All right, so any discussion then on 13-15? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That one also passes unanimously. 13-16, Mr. Isaac.
Thank you. This resolution approves an amendment to the, between us and Pristine Alpine Entertainment, which is the company that owns the amphitheater located above the new golf course there. And essentially what this does is just adjusts the months in which the payments are due to the city. Pristine Alpine Entertainment normally pays us in annual payments in May, and August, and October, and what this would do is basically change that payment to June, July, and August, which are more consistent with the revenue that they generate there. It'll essentially help them because they'll get that revenue in place during their summer months, more so than they do in May, and August, and October.
Okay, thank you. Council, any discussion there or a motion?
What's their relationship with Jim McMillan and United Concerts?
Uh, boy, I don't, I'm not sure I know exactly, you know, that's a theory. I mean, I...
Pristine Alpine Entertainment is owned by Jim McMillan and his partners.
Okay.
And the amphitheater is named Lisa.
Oh, thank you.
Kind of there's seen as how this is pretty straightforward, just a schedule change. I move the approval of Resolution 13-16.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving 13-16? Say aye.
Aye.
That also stands unanimously. 13-17, Mr. Isaac.
Thank you. These are the next three resolutions, basically you're dealing with the employees' health programs. The first is to renew contracts with Select Health for the medical benefits to city employees. And I could just say to the council that normally we'd have these contracts in place the first of the fiscal year, but the reason why this has kind of been delayed is because these contracts actually were given to our third-party administrator who, and they're simply just renewals. In the future, we're going to try and get these contracts in place July 1, because we've actually been using...
That's just better, which is what we do, yeah.
It's just, it was just a, it was just sort of a problem. Sometimes these companies, they wait a little longer to get the contracts in. That's why you're seeing basically a six-month delay here.
And so if we don't pass this, then the employees are without health insurance?
Well, yeah, that's the, the irony of this is we've been under these contracts for the past six months, so...
So it's been almost like a month-to-month lease, in essence, right? We're just kind of close on it.
You can actually change these contracts in a relatively short period of time, but the first then been is to renew the contract with Select Health for medical benefits.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion or a motion on that one?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Maybe, of 13-17.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any further discussion there?
Just a question, are there any with due Federal Healthcare Act, Affordable Healthcare Act, how's that affected our policy for the city?
This year, it has no effect, but next year it will have an effect. Most of the Affordable Healthcare Act will go into effect in 2014. We're going to be doing negotiations right now with IAC and Select Health, and everybody is trying to figure out how that's going to affect us. But essentially, we've done everything, so far, we've done everything we needed to do to comply with that particular, with the act. Next year, there will be some changes, and we're now just kind of sorting through what those are going to be. For example, we're looking at continuing a sort of a self-funding, if you will, or full indemnity program with Select Health, but we're also looking into self-funding and other means of providing those benefits, maybe through HSAs and some other things like raising deductibles and so forth that would essentially help us save on costs. There's also some not very clear criteria that might have to be met next year with respect to our part-time people. We're still trying to figure that out, as well as the state, because if we, as soon as we add benefits to any of our non-benefited employees right now, we have to pay this pension cost to the state, so that would really affect the city in a major way, and so we just need to be, make sure that we're in compliance, but also make sure we do it in a way that's the best for the city.
Paul, that last piece is a Utah law, right? So is that one that may we're looking for legislative fix this time?
I think, and we could check with Ms. Call, but I think the legislature is doing that, not necessarily through the legislature, but changing their own policies, because it's their own policies that suggest that if you even provide an employee with, say, PTO, just one benefit, then it qualifies them for the state benefit. So I do think that's being handled, but I'm not sure it's being handled on the Hill or just within the policy itself with the state. They recognize the problem, however.
Great question. Okay, any other questions? I forget what we were, did we have a motion on this one? We did. They all run together after one. Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. 13-18, Mr. Isaac.
This is the contract with AEMI or Educators Health Plans, Life, Accident and Health Incorporated. They provide our dental benefits.
Move for approval of Resolution 13-18.
Second.
Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
13-19, sir.
This last one is a contract we have with Standard Insurance that provides our long-term disability care. This is a great benefit that the city offers its employees in the event that employee is sick and cannot return to work. They can get onto this particular insurance plan and remain on that plan until they either retire or turn age 65, so it's a great benefit.
Right, thank you. Do we have a motion on this one?
I'd move approval of Resolution 13-19.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also unanimous. We have, do we have a need for executive session tonight, anyone?
No, sir, not from our staff.
Okay, and then before I adjourn, let me just mention to the scouts over here, we wear our hats as city council members, but we also, a few times a month, change and sit as the housing authority for the city as well as the building authority and the redevelopment agency. So you'll see three brief meetings now that follow. So we now adjourn the city council portion of tonight's meetings.
I'd like to call to order the RDA regular meeting for Tuesday, February 5. Note that we have had an opening ceremony and all are present. First item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes, three sets of minutes for January.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes of January 8, January 15, and January 22, 2013.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving these three sets of minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Communications?
No, sir.
Reporting with Chief Executive Officer, our new business is to elect a chairperson Nominations are open.
Mr. Chair, I nominate my colleague Steve Vincent to serve as the chair of the redevelopment agency 2013.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
I move that nominations cease.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded, and moved that nominations cease. All in favor of ceasing nominations?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent, sounds like you've been elected by acclamation. Do you want to take over now or wait?
Don't be finished with me.
Okay. And next item on the agenda is to elect a vice-chairperson for 2013. Nominations are now open for vice-chair.
Mr. Chair, I nominate my friend and colleague Corey Rushton to serve as vice-chair.
I'll second that, sir.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll close nominations, and all in favor of Mr. Rushton serving as vice-chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, it's been moved and passed. We now adjourn the meeting of the RDA.
I told you they were short.
I will call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley Housing Authority. Now we've had an opening ceremony and all members are present. January 8, 2013 was our last regular meeting that we have minutes on, so those are before you now.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving said minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any communications to report?
No, sir.
Okay, then our new business is to elect a chairperson for 2013 year. Nominations are now open.
I would gladly nominate Karen Lang to serve as chair of the Housing Authority.
Second.
Okay, seeing no other nominations, and that Ms. Lang served admirably in her role as vice-chair last year, we'll call a question and ask those in favor of appointing Karen Lang to be chairperson for the Housing Authority 2013 to say aye.
Aye.
Appears to be unanimous. We now need to elect a vice-chairperson in the event that Ms. Lang is unable to fulfill her duties as chairperson. Those nominations are now open.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate my colleague Steve Buehler to serve in that position.
Second. Second.
Okay, seeing no other nominations, we'll ask all those in favor of electing Mr. Buehler to be the vice-chairman of the Housing Authority, that please say aye.
Aye.
Appears to be unanimous, and seeing no other business, the Housing Authority will stand adjourned.
Call the order, the regular meeting of the building authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and all members of this body are present. We have before us the minutes of December 4, 2012. Move for approval of the minutes of December 4, 2012.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any communications to report today, Mr. Isaac?
No, sir.
Do we have new business today? That is to elect a chairperson for the 2013 year. Do we have any nominations?
I, I came to this meeting tonight adamant, and would ask that this body approve by acclamation the appointment of Mr. Tom Hunt to be the chairman and Mr. Don Christensen as vice-chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rushton. Do we have any other nominations?
I hardly second that nomination. Hardly.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Then, those in favor of approving Mr. Hunt to serve as the chair and Mr. Christensen to serve as the vice-chair, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes. They've been elected by acclamation. Our next item of business is to adjourn. This body therefore stands adjourned.